Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, November 16th, 2016. At this time, we ask you all to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for Manuel De Rosa, who passed away this week. Mr. De Rosa lived on William Street. I believe his funeral is Saturday from St. Nicholas.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we get into our ordinary business of approving the minutes and reading the warrants and the monies that we all spent this week, I'd like to introduce a special guest tonight that has requested that he make a statement. I won't go any further than that. It wouldn't be that much of a surprise. So with that said, let me allow me to please introduce Colonel Robert Perry, who would like to say a few words tonight.
We're tired.
Well, that's all right.
Number forty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Last Friday, on Veterans Day, as you're well aware, because you were in attendance, approximately thirty veterans attended a breakfast at prime time, and the purpose of that breakfast was to recognize service to veterans and veteran service to our nation. And the key players involved in making this event a success were, among others, the Dyton Lions, Alice's Last Stop, Mrs. Alice Souza, Mr. and Mrs. Thomas Ferry, Mr. Jim Aguirre, and Ms. Heidi Swest. I think special recognition and a special thank you should go out to our veterans agent, Don Hershey, and to his family. They seem to be in the middle of all these wonderful events for veterans. And on behalf of all those veterans in attendance, I thank Don for this event and for the outstanding service he provides to our veterans on a daily basis. And that's my statement, and I thank you for allowing me to make it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll have a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the executive session October 18th and the executive session of November 1st, 2016.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries.
I was thinking about that money we spent this week.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 20A-17 in the amount of eighty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-sixteen dollars, ninety-one cents payroll. Warrant 20B-17 in the amount of one hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-seven cents, and warrant 20C-17 in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and ninety-five, four dollars, fifty-six cents. All those are accounts payable, all dated November 16th. Be approved.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Again, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. That motion carries unanimously. Correspondents?
No correspondence.
No correspondence. The announcements for tonight: Trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. You can call (508) 669-6431 for more information. If you need fuel assistance this summer, or this winter, call Citizens for Citizens at One Town Green, Taunton, Mass. at (508) 823-6346. Again, that's for fuel assistance, for anyone that might need it. The number again is (508) 823-6346. There is a winter parking ban in effect from November 1st through April 1st of each year. No parking is allowed on any street during this time between the hours of 12:00 midnight and 6:00 a.m. and during snow and ice events. Landfill stickers are now available for the calendar year 2017. They are available at the transfer station only during the regular hours of operation on Tuesdays and Saturdays. Payment is by check made payable to the town of Dyton for fifteen dollars. That's a five-dollar increase for this coming year. Your registration is required for the vehicle being permitted, and you must be a resident. And we try to remind this every time we read: These stickers are not transferable. And the reason that you must purchase these stickers, this is the only sticker, at the transfer station, because in order for it to be valid, it will be put on to your vehicle either in front of the attendant, or the attendant will do it for you. A new schedule of fees for the landfill will go into effect January 1st, 2017. The animal control officer is conducting bond inspections. Representatives from Comcast will be present at the Board of Selectmen's meeting on November 30th. The public is invited to give input or ask questions. Dyton Lights On, 2016, scheduled for Saturday, November 26th, 2016, at the Dyton Town Hall, beginning at 3:30 p.m. There will be storytime with Mrs. Claus, performances by the Dyton Elementary School Chorus, Dyton Elementary High School Pro Musica, and the West Dyton Christian Church, caroling with Senator Mark Pacheco and Representative Patricia Hadad, and of course, the best singers of all, the three selectmen that you are now looking at, and a 50/50 raffle and a parade followed by Lights On at 5:30 p.m. Refreshments will be served in the Dyton Community Food Bank will also be accepting donations of food and wrapped toys at the event. The Dyton Food Bank Distribution will be held this Saturday, November 19th, the Low Level One of these announcements made me think, don't we have to read a second reading of the sticker fees tonight?
Yes, we do have that.
Okay. Anybody else have any announcements? No? If not, we'll move on to old business. Transfer station fee schedule. Oh, yes, Dean, yes. Those of you that were with us last week, there has been some increase on fees at our transfer station for this upcoming year, that we propose to put these additional, these increased fees in effect January 1st, 2017. The stickers are for sale as we speak. They will run for the entire year of 2017, so you're actually getting about thirteen, thirteen and a half months out of a year's payment. It's required for these increased fees to take effect only after this board has read them three consecutive meetings, and in our case, we have a weekly meeting with Board of Selectmen, and this will be the second reading of these increased fees. I would like to just go through this very quickly, especially for the new people who have come to town. The hours of operation at our transfer station is Tuesday from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The sticker to the transfer station is for residents only at a cost of fifteen dollars. Any unauthorized use of this sticker, which means not on the proper vehicle or the unauthorized person using it, is subject to a one-thousand-dollar fine. The fees for the disposal of individual items are as follows: An air conditioner, fifteen dollars. Barbecue grill, ten dollars. A box spring, fifteen dollars. A car tire, five dollars each. A computer monitor, ten dollars. A desk or a table, ten dollars. A dryer, fifteen dollars. File cabinet, ten dollars. A mattress, fifteen dollars. A microwave oven, ten dollars. An empty propane tank, ten dollars. A refrigerator, fifteen dollars. A stove, fifteen dollars. A television, twenty dollars. And I would like to make a comment about the televisions. The increase here, even though we're still a little lower than some of our surrounding towns, the last load of televisions that were picked up at the transfer station cost this town twenty-three dollars apiece to dispose of them. So we're just trying to keep this at an even pace at the hazardous station, and we've had to go up a little on these. A truck tire each is ten dollars. A VCR is ten dollars. A washer is fifteen dollars. And a water heater is fifteen dollars. Please note that before you bring the refrigerator in, it must be removed of any freon. We have trailer fees: An eight-foot trailer or less, twenty dollars. An eight-to-ten-foot trailer, thirty dollars. A ten-to-fifteen-foot trailer, forty dollars. A sixteen-foot, which is the maximum size we'll accept at the transfer station, is a fifty-dollar cost. We'll also open up a new item or a new product that can be brought in: Construction debris. You may bring a half pickup truckload or a half-trailer load, which is eight foot or less, and the cost is fifty dollars. A full pickup truckload or a half-trailer load, eight foot or less, seventy-five dollars. And any miscellaneous metals is twenty dollars for a pickup load or ten dollars for a partial load. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is the second reading of the increased fees for the transfer Moving on to new business. First on the agenda, review, discuss, and act on a recommendation of the Highway Superintendent to award bid for Magico, which is an ice melt additive for snow and ice removal. This is a, these are bids for Magico, which is an ice melt additive for snow and ice At this time, the Town of Dyton Highway Department is changing our receipt for road treatment for various reasons. At this time, Superintendent Ferry would like to recommend Innovative Surface Solutions with a price of one dollar and twenty-six cents per gallon. We do have another bid that came in from Safe Services in Salem, New Hampshire, at two dollars and nineteen cents a gallon. And a third bid came in for Middlesex Ice Control at a price of two dollars and forty-nine cents per gallon. So Superintendent Ferry has recommended to this board that Innovative Surface Solutions be the vendor for Magico with a price of one dollar, twenty-six cents per gallon.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we award the bid to Innovative Surface Solutions as recommended.
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. That motion passes unanimously. That's a big difference in prices.
More than a dollar.
Wow.
I wonder if that's that salt, though, stuff that the state uses, you know, when they pre-treat?
Yep, yep. I think it is. Next on the agenda, review, discuss, and act on a request from the Holiday Committee for the waiver of food permit fees for the Lights On celebration. I have a letter here from the Town of Dyton Holiday Committee to the Board of Selectmen, and it's addressed as such: "Board of Selectmen, the Dyton Holiday Committee requests a waiver of the food permit fee in the name of both the Holiday Committee and the Dyton Lions Club for the Lights On celebration to be held on November 26th, 2016, here out back at the Town Hall."
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the request to waive the food permit fee for the Lights On Committee and Dyton Lions for this celebration.
I happily second that, Mr. Chairman.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Next on the new business, review, discuss, and act on the warrant for the special election for Tuesday, January 10th, 2017. Seems funny to say 2017. It's almost here. This is the warrant: Town of Dyton, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Bristol County. To either of the constables of the Town of Dyton in the county of Bristol, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify the inhabitants of the Town of Dyton qualified to vote in elections to meet at the Dyton Elementary School for both Precincts 1 and 2 on Tuesday, the 10th day of January 2017, at 8:00 a.m., then and there to vote on the following question: Shall the Town of Dyton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds to be issued in order to finance the design, construction, furnishing, and equipping of a new police headquarters and communications center, including all costs incidental and related thereto? For this purpose, the polls will be open at 8:00 a.m. and shall close at 7:00 p.m. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at each of the post offices, at the Town Hall, and at the main fire station, all in said Dyton, seven days at least before the time of said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doing thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of said meeting. Given under our hands, the 16th day of November in the year 2016." And this will be signed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go to approve the warrant and sign it for the special town meeting, excuse me, special town election on January 10th.
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to back up a little. Tonight, approximately 6:15, this board had a meeting with the Assessors' Office in order to set the tax rate for FY17 for the, for residential and commercial. The tax rate for residential properties in this town for FY16 was fifteen dollars and twenty-three cents per thousand. For FY17, the new tax rate for residential property, fourteen dollars and ninety-four cents. That is a decrease of twenty-nine cents per thousand. The business and commercial rate for FY16 was twenty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. That's what we're currently paying. For FY17, the new rate will be twenty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, which is a decrease of fifty-six cents per thousand. Would either of my colleagues like to make any comments on this tax rate?
I'm glad to see it went down a little bit.
That's down, everybody that's watching. I know, hard to believe, it went down.
But just to comment, what we did find out is that our assessed valuations increased based on the formula that is used, and the, so the property values have increased, but the tax rate has decreased. However, there are certain homes in town, we found out, will have a slight increase. There were some rough calculations done, and Mr. Cronin's property and mine, his total tax bill decreased by twenty-five cents. Mine decreased by five dollars and change. But the chairman of the Board of Assessors' tax bill has actually increased based on how this whole formula works. So anyhow, I think for, across the board, most people will see a slight decrease in their tax bill for FY17.
So if anybody has any questions about this, I will divert them to a member of the Finance Committee for years, Nancy Gula, and she'll answer all those questions.
And she will recommend you see the assessors.
Very good, very good.
I would also comment, Mr. Chairman, that for those of you who attended the special town meeting in October, all of the action that was taken that night was based on either money available that had already been approved or free cash expenditures. There were no raise and appropriate articles at the special town meeting. Raise and appropriate affects your tax rate. At the annual town meeting in June was when we did the raise and appropriate articles, which for the most part are the basic town department budgets. So again, as a result, we've seen a slight decrease in our tax rate, and I will also point out that we were able to put money at the special town meeting into both our stabilization account and into our
Capital.
Capital stabilization account. We also put an additional, was it a hundred and fifty thousand, went into OPEB?
Mm-hmm.
So we were able to do that, and we are well under the levy limit, in other words, well under what Prop 2 and 1/2 would allowed us to have raised. We are well under that substantially. And we still have a good sum in free cash that will roll over into the next year if we don't have to have any special meetings because of unforeseen expenses. So I will echo what Mr. Schwartz had said at the town meeting, that the town is in good financial shape as far as being able to maintain stability tax-wise, be able to put money into our rainy day accounts. We continue to work on addressing the OPEB unfunded liability. And by the way, during the audit that was, I should say, the groundwork for the audit that's been done, because they're still working on it outside of this building, the auditor was very happy to see the progress that the Town of Dyton has made in putting money into OPEB, because they see many, many communities around the state. And I believe the opinion expressed was that Dyton is in good shape because of what we've been able to do. So hopefully, we will continue to do well from a financial standpoint and be able to keep costs in check and be able to continue to provide services that are appreciated by many people in town.
Thank you, Nancy. Next on the agenda, review, discuss, and act on a request for a waiver of workman's compensation insurance for the plowing season 2016 to 2017. I have a request here, and it reads, "To whom it may concern?" It should concern the Board of Selectmen. "I, Stanley Leveque, am requesting a waiver from the Board of Selectmen for workman's comp for the plow season 2016 to 2017. Thank you in advance, Stanley Leveque."
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the waiver request from Workman's Compensation Insurance for the plow season 2016, 2017 submitted by Stanley Leveque.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Next, the next section of our agenda tonight is reports. I myself would like to take just a couple minutes to go over one report that I have. This concerns the ongoing, almost two-year duration of updating the Regional Agreement Amendment. It was a committee that was formed almost two years ago, consisted of anywhere from ten to fourteen people at all times around the table. This resulted in the Education Reform Act back in the early 90s that made vast changes to education in the state. And when our regional agreement was looked at, that was last updated in 1987, there was an awful lot of sections of that regional agreement that needed updating, to say the This committee has, again, I repeat, almost two years diligently held meetings to try to work out all the wording, fix all the inadequacies, to meet all the criteria of the Education Reform Act. And I'm proud to announce that as of And I'm proud to announce that as of last night, which ended pretty much so our portion of the whole process as being the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, we have agreed to pass on a draft, a final draft, to the next step in the process, which will be the Dyton Rehoboth School Committee. At the next step, the school committee will review, take into consideration the amount of time and efforts put in by this Regional Agreement Amendment Committee over the past two years, and give their evaluation and any changes or ideas or solutions or different ways of updating this agreement they may have, and sort of give feedback on it. Hopefully, this next step in the process, the school committee will approve what we spent so much time on. And I've been asked by one of the co-chairmen of the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee to pass this little statement on. Mr. Chris Andrade, who co-chaired this committee with Mr. Katz from Rehoboth, has asked me to invite all people next Tuesday, November 22, 2016, to the school committee meeting at the high school. You are welcome to participate in the discussion with the school committee, and they would greatly appreciate any feedback, suggestions, or questions that you might have on the new updated regional agreement that this committee has passed on to them for their approval. I'd like to commend the people that were on this committee. It was a long haul, a lot of discussion, without going into all the different proposals that were thrown back and forth across the tables. I myself, representing the selectman that was on this committee from the Town of Dyton, am very pleased with the results of this update. It's a regional agreement that from now on will be looked at every five years. There's so much turnover and new issues that come up in the state of Massachusetts as far as education. This has to be looked at on a more timely basis than this last time. We were looking at, what, 16, 20, 20-something years? 19 years? So I'm pleased to say that it's now going to the next step in the procedure, and I look forward to the school committee welcoming and accepting it with open arms. No more RAC committee. Does any of my colleagues have any reports?
I think it's actually been 30 years since that regional agreement's been...
Was it?
Because the only amendment was made when we went to a full K-12. And I think that was around '86, '86, '87, somewhere around there.
You're right, 29 years, yep.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Long time.
Good job, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Perseverance.
Patience.
Mr. Schwartz kept me going.
I'm sure. Probably kept each other going.
Next on the agenda, any acknowledgements?
I got a couple of... I do have a couple of reports, just briefly.
Oh, all right.
A very happy thing to report. At the special town meeting in October, we asked you to upfront money to pay for the holiday train and the reconstruction, repair, replacement of Santa's and the sleigh and the deck of the little trailer that it's hauled on. I have a great progress report. We were contacted by Bristol Plymouth this week. The little train engine has been completed and will be picked up tomorrow at Bristol Plymouth and be put in storage, but it will be here for our annual Lights On Celebration. And following that, it will be parked north of the Town Hall where we usually have it, and it will be there so that parents can come and visit and take pictures with their children. I don't think we're going to have the sleigh, Santa and the sleigh, simply because there's a lot more work involved in cutting out all of those reindeer and painting it and getting all of that project put together. But we're just very pleased that the train has been completed. And I have pictures of before, and when you see before pictures, which I will post on my website eventually, on my Facebook page, but when you see what it was that we got donated to us from, I think it was the Coons at Naval Air Station? The... It was a... I call it a tow motor. And when you see what this finished product looked like, we've seen the computer mockups of what it looks like. So it's a train. So the train is coming to Dyton, not South Coast Rail. But we're getting a train.
Bring your cameras.
That's for sure. The other thing I wanted to mention was, last Thursday, last Thursday, last Friday, no, last Thursday, as part of the Attleboro-Tonton Housing Consortium, the meetings I've been attended, and I think it's every two months or three months in Tonton, they had an open house and a dedication of a former shoe factory in Middleborough called The Shoe Shop. The Shoe Shop has been converted into affordable housing, and there were... The building is fully occupied. There were three apartments open, a one-bedroom, handicapped, accessible apartment, a regular one-bedroom apartment, and a two-bedroom apartment. And so I was invited, because I represent Dyton, at those committee meetings, and I did take pictures of it. And for those of you who are familiar with the old mills that had the hardwood floors and the big posts and the bricks, most of that has been left inside the building, and it's really pretty. The... You can see the posts, the support beams in halls. Much of the flooring that was originally there is still there. They replaced a minimal amount of flooring. The... All of the windows that were in the factory were left. So the apartments are very bright and airy, but they did a great job on that, and that was really pretty to see. I sent my colleagues some photographs that I took. But that was one of the larger projects that the consortium has had. This is the same consortium that I have mentioned. Last year helped some families in Dyton to, for the first time, buy a home. So they do a number of different kinds of things, but this was a mill rehab that they really did a great job. The photographs I took at the Lions Arts Festival, which consisted mostly of student artwork, if you go to the Nancy Gulat Facebook, all of those pictures, I think there's eight or nine of them, are all posted there, and you can see the artwork from the schools and some of the preschools in town. There was a farm scene that's really great. It's got animals in it, and it's just a great job that the little children did. And the last announcement I have is the first class that graduated from Dyton-Rehoboth, which is my class, class of 61, is working on a reunion to be held next year, two days in June, and I will have more information about that. But if there's anybody out there from the class of 61 that hasn't been contacted, just please get in touch with me here at Town Hall, and we can get information to you. Thank you.
Two days, wow.
Yeah, but it's not going to be.
Do we have any acknowledgements?
No.
Oh, no. Record's been broken.
We'll acknowledge the Bristol Plymouth students for doing a great job.
That's right. That's right. Public input, I don't believe we have any, which will bring us to adjournment if my fellow colleagues don't have any parting comments or any statements.
Parting shots.
I didn't say that.
I make a motion, adjourn.
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. The ayes have it, and motion carries. Good night, ladies and gentlemen. See you next week. And good night, cable, and as usual, thank you.